All right, here we go. Um, continuation of what we were discussing the other day on the insurance. There's been a lot of moving parts since then. Um, I did the extended invitation of Mr. Marlowe and he declined. And, uh, moving from that, since that, this field has got an extension granted until May fifteenth.
May fifteenth and, uh, Laurie Lee with Benefits Administration did say somehow it was lost or added in translation that at no point was it ever said that employees would lose benefits within thirty days. So, the extension period has been granted. I think we can work out something there, considering the proposal that, uh, Crystal said Mr. Marlowe would be satisfied with with the signature on it.
Um, I, if I'm permitted to enter an email, correct?
Oh, yeah.
I have an email for Ms. Lee and I'm gonna read it in its entirety to settle people's nerves. Um, "All I encourage that Campbell County Board of Education and county are working to resolve the outstanding MOU. This morning, Director Field requested MBA approve an extension deadline to return the MOU. I hope the thirty day extension to May fifteenth provides sufficient time to finalize MOU. I have also learned that Mr. Marlowe has indicated that he is fully signed a document. If VA would be open to revising the signature line, please provide me with the language that Mr. Marlowe is proposing to revise the MOU. Please note, back to my knowledge, no one at VA stated that if the MOU is not returned by April fifteenth, will systems employing insurance only cease the thirty days? Termination of coverage is a decision that only the LEA Insurance Committee can make, not VA. As my letter stated, if the MOU is not returned, that matter goes before the committee regarding the next steps. With respect to the frequency asked questions referenced by son, which was me, um, these provide guidance for both our local EA and local government agencies, including guidance when agencies may not have someone serving as a fiscal officer, such as with a vacancy. This occurs very infrequently and as Mr. Marlowe serves as the Finance Director for the entire county, including the school system, this option is not appropriate for Campbell County schools." So, that was a big sticking point here, fiscal officer, Finance Director, so they've come back and acknowledged that. Turning to the issue of ABC, um, in two thousand and two, Mr. Marlowe requested that Campbell County Finance Office employee to be permitted to enter information to the Roman system. A function of agency benefit coordinators that is, as he has pointed out, his request for an exception was approved by her predecessor and is still in place today. A lot of the recent controversy, VA will continue to honor that exception, permitting employees of the Campbell County Fiscal Office to continue to serve as ABCs for the school system inside MOU. Now, I asked him a little further about that, and that's, in two thousand and two, that's when things was transitioning from fax and paper to email. So, he wanted it to where they could sign, you know, go in there and enter people's credentials to get payroll cuts for your health insurance. It was a lot quicker to do an email than fax and old fashioned. So, with that said, we are now, Mr. Marlowe has presented his proposal to be the Finance Director and the duties that follow that under the state statute. Right? You gotta understand, the Office of Finance Director was created by the fiscal after eighty-one and there is a statute that says what he does and what his duty is on. He does not do managerial duties for Campbell County Schools. He's a Finance Director for Campbell County. Now, I know it's complicated, but that's his argument. So, moving forward, Laurie Lee has it, the VA has it, I feel confident that they're gonna come back with a good response and we can put this to rest. So, uh, we have till May fifteenth and, uh, as soon, I guess, as we know something, we'll share that information. But until then, uh, business as usual. Uh, you know, there's been a lot of people working, a lot of us, and, you know, I can do, I have done everything that I can, she's done everything she can, you've helped me, and I've shared everything with you all that I've got. I've emailed against everything that I've done and said. And, uh, you know, I think in my personal opinion, this Financial Management Act of eighty-one creates a lot of barriers and a lot of different, it's a lot different than what other counties operate. If we had our own finance department and the Campbell County School Department, we would not be facing this right now. Correct?
Correct.
But that's not the way it's written. So, moving forward, I hope that everybody, you know, we get this corrected and we never have to address this again.
I would add this, for being all of you and representing a lot of systems, people forget sometimes that boards of education transition, transition from membership, people grow up, directors come, they go, people at the state level come, they go, and stuff gets lost in the translation. And I think for this to have been such a tough issue that you all handled it so well, and I thought it was really cool that your county attorney and county mayor showed up, I thought it was good, Crystal's, they were good, held their job, and get this worked out with what could have been a really bad situation for everybody. You all worked late into the evening, you guys came back here. I've never, our board would have taken fifteen minutes to spend what you all have spent collectively the better part of a couple of weeks working on. And I think each and every one of you should be congratulated and all of your teachers and staff should be appreciative because I can hear you, my board members can't be putting on a, don't, we'd have looked at the records if it's that, it would have been yet. And I think each and every one of you did a good job and I think the bank did such a good working relationship with your mayor and county attorney to get him there. Chance of our mayor walking into an extra day of education meeting, he's zero, uh, she's a private school person and, uh, I thought that was good. So, your teachers should really be appreciative of the work that all of you all put in.
Anybody else on this subject?
I would just like, kind of, before we, that when we make negative remarks towards the Finance Officer, I didn't say your name, say Jeff Marlowe cares nothing about what anyone says or thinks of you. But, in the same way, he has a elderly eighty-seven-year-old mother that negative comments, negative things on social media really bother her, so I would just like for her to be mindful of that. You know, when someone's son gets attacked, it doesn't matter how old you are, it doesn't matter that he's catching up to her at eight, um, that's her son and getting tired of her.
I'll just, I'm gonna add this, you know, I've always been called in my life, that we might not like each other, whoever it might be, we might not keep standing each other, but when you're in a role, sometimes you gotta just, just sit aside and work for the common good. Like with here, I've, all I've asked for is a solution. Since three days ago, I mean, I, you know, I've just been trying to read all this and we are, we are at a solution. We're, we're there. And, uh, and in government, it's not easy. I mean, look at the national government now, marketing each other every day in terms of those. So, you know, I take my role as chairman as serious, I wanna bridge this together, not apart. And, you know, I may overstep my grounds on this, but I'm gonna take the lead and try to help mitigate the problem. And I feel like I did.
Okay. The first email I got was said, hey, let me turn this work around. Michael, we can't, we don't, we don't have any power. And I wanna say something about what Crystal said, 'cause I don't really think, I'm kinda like Jeff. I, I've been public office, done this for forty years and it's a thin skin, you call me anything you want and I don't care, but it bothers my daughter. And when she hears something said about that on social media, I mean, I can't bear to work this thing, but she'll come home to me and I just, I regret this, it just, it sets her on fire and I forget that sometimes. And I'm sure at the meetings, I probably slammed Jeff, I probably, I know I slammed you when I was here the last time, the time, like, I've been a builder contact, we like to bring you out. Uh, I think we all can do a better job of that sometimes. At any time, if I ever say anything negative about any of you all or any of the media existed, I'll land right in his mouth and, you know, I'll try to do better ability.
I'll tell you, he didn't want that, like I said, girl, put him off at the left door because she compared everyone else to one twenty-nine. She was a former educator and I don't write it.
My law lawyer did that, you know, this past week and that makes me kinda sad, just thinking about if my law lawyer was still alive to do that. So, forget about that.
Is the meeting, you know, is the meeting clear on what we've said? Do you have any questions? Because I want it relayed that we're gonna, this is gonna be secure. All people understand, be calm, this is gonna be secure.
We will not lose any interns, everybody's gonna lose any interns.
So, we'll get it done and, uh, any more comments on it? All right, round the room, Mr. Head.
We did make a motion to, to, to give in for the ability to hire someone in that position. I certainly don't want to just stand back and go through here again. Uh, so, you know, I don't know if that's, you guys.
I would recommend leaving that out until there's a resolution of this because she may have to act at emergency level, you know, you'd have to call in sort of, be, and then once the director gets this done, then you can rescind the motion and go from there. But I would recommend leaving that as is, because Jennifer may need it.
Mr. Laster? Mr. Cummings?
Uh, yeah, with this, hopefully, resolution coming to this, I wanna call everybody's attention to this on the one budget situation. Um, I think about this every day and try to act like creative solutions for this, I pray about it a lot, but, um, you know, that's a big number for me and, um, I, I'm interested to see how we're gonna come up with these solutions. I've, I don't, I, I, it's been mentioned to me, uh, different citizens have said, what about, um, take it from the front balance? I, I think that's an awful lot, and similar to like, if, if I can't do it this year, why would I make sure to, to even further that and say, I couldn't pay this back, so why would I, why would I go further and be, uh, because that's a potential bankrupt for our system. And, um, I just wanna call everybody's attention and that be what they wanna be praying about it. I look forward to solving this.
I thank you all, Mr. Rattler.
Okay, I made, I second the motion. I mean, if we did make the vote, it's not passive, we're, I, I just solved.
Mr. Johnson?
Uh, the only thing that I'll say is just to, uh, thank you guys for everybody kinda working so hard on this and I, I appreciate Mr. Marlowe working on this as well. One thing I will say, uh, in reference to, to Ms. Creepmore is, you know, I know that Mr. Marlowe doesn't care what anybody thinks, that's obvious, we've asked him to come here, he said no. Uh, he doesn't care what we think, he doesn't care what anybody thinks. Is that a good thing or a bad thing? I don't know. Um, I guess that's the opinion of those that he's accountable to, but he's not accountable to any of us, that's very clear. Um, I do hate anytime people say, I've seen it online, pretty nasty things, you know, fire this person, hate this person, we've all seen it about ourselves, right? You just gotta kinda smile and wave and know that you're doing what's in the best interest, but I think we should continue to put transparency at the forefront of everything. Um, and, uh, I, I feel like I have a good relationship with Mr. Marlowe, he took Tom when I was first elected, several hours to meet with me and answer most of the questions that I had and I really appreciated his time. Um, but, you know, one thing that I would encourage is for that entire office to work on transparency. Uh, you know, we have folks that we all represent that have very legitimate and serious questions and just saying, no, I'm not showing up to ever answer those to the public, just gets people more excited. Um, and so I thank Mr. Marlowe for the years of clean audits he's led us to and, and his hard work and I know he has a very tough job as we all do and, uh, just glad that we've voted solution. Thank you.
I thank you, Mr. Marlowe, for your hard work. We decided to come up with a solution and, uh, I hate that the teachers, uh, I don't think, no, I've had several, I went by the schools, the school today, you know, what about our insurance, what about our, our insurance, and they've been really, really worried about it. And I guess I have a question as to where the miscommunication was, that they thought that one of them said insurance. Since I think what Jim just read in that email, uh, that they never stated that, so I'm kinda, I.
I think it was a loss. I would have read those emails, that they were gonna cut it off at the state level. I think she's backing up, well, I mean, Jennifer didn't read it that way.
Well, it didn't, I, I've never received anything that said thirty days. I was just told, uh, I think in conversation here that it was going to be within thirty days, but, um, I mean, it was in the first email Mr. Marlowe sent to Mr. Coker, he said this is a time-sensitive issue, it needs to be resolved, I'm not aware that the board is aware of this, and I responded to him and I said, yes.
That was the first email I got.
I am aware, I'm awaiting the signature. So, that is when a week, you know, it's due next Tuesday, so I had to receive the signature. So, I had reached out, made you and Mr. Miller aware of the fact that I have a week to get the MOU turned in and I do not have a signature. So, that's where the urgency came in.
I didn't think there was a miscommunication.
No, it was just trying to figure out how we could get the signature because it had to be submitted Tuesday, April fifteenth.
And, Mr. Miller, if I may, I know that I spoke to Senator Yeager, who the state went to him and said, if you don't get this resolved, the long-term impact, I, I don't know where the thirty day came from, but the long-term impact could be your employees lose their insurance right now. Is there several layers and are we on, you know, we know it's time-sensitive, did anybody ever say, well, you've got seventy-two hours to figure this out? I don't think, but they were very clear from the state to Senator Yeager, was that what your conversation was?
Yes, and my email thread was, has been weeks of correspondence between, uh, Mary Andersky, who is the Chief Financial Officer at the state, and Laurie Lee, who is Benefits Administration. So, that is what I would communicate to Dale, that is the only person that I have, the only two people I communicated with.
Is that they go along with you?
And you, I included Jeffrey in that and Dale.
I have, this is world record, this is over the last few minutes. Think that, think it is?
I'm gonna count to thirty-something if I don't know.
No.
This is just a beat.
Hey, after Crystal goes, I'm gonna say something before we close.
Mr. Mrs. Creepmore?
Um, I'm gonna head on lines. I have, I think I've got Gail and, um, the announcement, we're gonna have a budget fundings on, that's what I'm hoping, that's what she just says, and.
Oh, yeah. What I had. Yeah, we have to get our times, so to our policies.
Did you say that date now?
Date, the twenty-eighth, two day, twenty-eighth, um, first location, that's about the, the twenty-ninth, sorry, the twenty-ninth, yeah, downstairs, uh, some office. Four.
Can you do it by, can you, can you do it?
Five.
And yours is six.
Okay. Is that it, Mrs. Creepmore?
Yes, well, I would like to thank you when I deal with speed to check and, uh, spell it, you know, like in, I think perhaps not at all, but always only side, you want, or that would make its neck to correct, kind of a solution.
Just, uh, okay, one day, the plate room at Campbell County Hospital, the ball field, I was there today, uh, it's come along very nicely, put the floor, we'll be four to mark, concrete floor inside. And after that says, I expect that to be done very soon, it should be mid-May, uh, and that will be completed. Uh, other than that, again, appreciate everybody's patience, um, and, uh, at the end of the day, we will succeed, so.
Before y'all leave, I don't know about what sense I'm saying, you said, just so that you are aware, my understanding is you all have a significant budget shortfall, like a million dollars.
We want to, we're trying to get there.
Well, so that you'll know, be aware, you cannot go with your own designated reserve or any recurring expectations. So, if you're, if, if the bailout plan at the end of the day is that, oh, it's a bad fiscal idea to do, uh, certain things cannot be done that way. Second, I don't know what your all situation will be with the vouchers that are coming through. The, we are projecting in Anderson County a loss of four hundred students, just from self-polling. Our, we're a little insulated because we just don't have any private schools that can take, I mean, there's a church that's gonna open a school, but we're projecting four hundred, uh, every two hundred students, you should figure this billion dollars that you gotta be short that you come through, so need to be, as you calculate your budget, be thinking about who takes voucher money, think at homeschool, take the voucher money to some degree. You cannot stop a capital project that is already begun. So, you cannot, like, if you've got money set aside and you've started the capital project, you can't use that money to, to curl back around. And if you don't have a balanced budget, I think it's September thirtieth, you and Jennifer go, Jeff.
Oh, man, we're not going to be doing this.
You said a homeschool can take voucher money to some degree, what is that?
There it is, this is the money because, that, you know, they wanna spend the voucher money. Well, some counties like Anderson County, we just don't have private schools that are there, we, Knoxville, they've got tons of private schools, but even there, there's wait lists to fill. So, a church school to come up can't be considered a school unless they come under another school's number for five years. The church where I'm, uh, the minister, Second Baptist, is gonna come under Grace Baptist's number, so we are gonna form a K through eight school at Second Baptist Church and we will be under the school number of Grace Baptist, but our schools, our church was built to be a school. We knew the day was coming, we paid off the facility this past month, so we can hold eight hundred students right now, but we just have to get the state to turn this off under Grace and our senior pastor, Grace's pastor, do that. There is a question that they're debating in the state, Scott Bennett and I kinda disagree on this, is can you take your voucher money if you know your church is getting ready to form a homeschool coalition? There's no question, like, at Second Baptist, they can take their voucher money, you said go all nine thousand, go to Second. What if, say, I don't know what y'all's churches are, but let's call it First Baptist Church of Jaxburg, decides that they're going to form a church school, but they can just get under another church's number, but they can't really get the facility open yet? I think that they can use their voucher money as a homeschool student working under a church that is in the process of getting established.
It doesn't have to be accredited?
No, because you, they're gonna be under an accredited number, so like, at Second, we, we will not be the owner of our school, we own the campus, we own the facility, but we will be under Grace Baptist Church's number. And I know that we're gonna do the same thing at Sturkey Baptist now, at Sturkey Els and Val, because they are our affiliate church. So, we're gonna go five years under Grace, which is established and accredited, and then we get our accreditation. The debate becomes, and there was a big interview in Nashville on this, to where a lady goes, well, we've got forty kids that go to this church, it's gonna take us time to get a facility built, but we can come under this other existing accredited church's number. Can they go online and use stuff through their virtual school and essentially homeschool and get the voucher? The governor's office is saying, yes. I think, yes, there are some attorneys that think, no. If that happens, I think you should anticipate some of your area churches that are bigger will reach out to established church schools and say, can we go under your number, go virtually, and then you'll lose that money as well. So, as you budget, I would start maybe trying to get a, uh, we just did a head count, we kinda just did a survey of, do you plan on trying to, to get a voucher, you know, just to get a rough idea of what we would expect. And that's where we came up with the roughly four hundred students. We're hoping it's lucky, but if, if, if Second opens the door, it'll be closer to, you know, seven hundred, seven hundred.
But now in its first year, they're only gonna virtual thousand.
Yeah, and, but see, what's happened is, in like, Fentress County, they have no shop, nobody, Fentress County, there's no private school, they can get it from over to there, no shop. There's certain counties that they're just out of the water, so even though it's just twenty thousand, like in Knoxville, all your privates are full. Second Baptist, if it opens, and you've got seven, eight hundred students that we could take to model, I mean, we've got the, the classrooms, two cafeterias, the gymnasium, auditorium, we, we built our building as a school. And we're seventy thousand square feet and we build another building and we got the twenty million dollar, uh, capital, a line of credit tomorrow from. So, I would anticipate that some Campbell counties do, we have Campbell County residents that go to Second Baptist, we're about forty-five hundred member church, so we would be the only church, I think, that's in this area that's ready to go today, that I could see you all having a church that says, hey, we think we could get enough to do it if they go under another thing. But I do think this budget year is gonna be a hard budget year and I would probably budget conservatively going forward, just anticipating that, you know, you all may only lose twenty, thirty students, but I would not look at it as.
Or I would lose that.
Yeah, I would be very, I would be very conservative on my budget estimates as I come through, particularly since you have a deficit that you're, you're having to work under already and with the tariffs, you know, in theory, that would drive sales tax revenue up. If prices go up, sales tax revenue go up, but I don't think you all have a significant sales tax base here in your county, I think you have more property, um, tax base for your fund. So, you know, I just wanted to say that, when you said that, it made me think about it, to make sure that you don't let this slip up on you as you go through your budget process.
And a couple of questions on the deal, is it a rough estimate, every two hundred students is a million?
Roughly.
So, I could lose two hundred to it.
It would be odd if you would have two.
I don't even know how many we have homeschool, but, um, we've lost roughly sixty students over the course of this year in all of this town, sixty students.
Initially, we, well, we're down four hundred eighty from last year. When I started on the board, we had seventy-six hundred students and we're down to fifty-one hundred, forty-eight hundred, fifty-one hundred, it's where we fluctuate, and it's just, they go to home, the COVID killed us, the, everybody went to that virtual learning and they kinda liked it, they're gonna come back. And it's killing us on our budget, our budget, every, only thing that saves us is, is sales, we're a high sales tax county at ten percent, we did the max, so, you know, that's helped us, but other than, and the liquor by the drink, we don't, we didn't have liquor for a long time in Anderson County, and the liquor by the drink money has jumped up, 'cause all the Mexican restaurants opened and they sell liquor. I mean, we didn't, I, we were dry county for a long time.
Okay. Good. One more thing on the director evaluation instrument. Um, Gail's gonna send that out to you all, can we, we put it back down to weeks?
It's up to you.
Is two weeks enough for yous to return it? You're gonna mail it back to Gail and Dale and Mr. Cantrell will wanna do that.
Where's it gonna go out? Because I would like to have time to get my evidence folder together, so I mean, that would take us, um.
In a week?
No, Gail.
A week, a week or two, it don't matter.
If you'll just give me a couple of weeks.
Couple of weeks, okay, we'll shoot for that.
Proceed.
There's one section on there, can you have some of the, the scoring section?
The data.
Can you have the, the data in it? It counts for the date. I appreciate that. I'd rather him to put it in, I'd rather us have to scramble through all that kind of thing.
Very good. Mr. Chairman, I mean, there is somewhere on there where we are required to sign our name, correct?
I don't know, I, I don't, I don't know, I don't think so.
Mr. Cantrell, so here's my concern, with that issues in the past, this is one thing I'm incredibly adamant about, I would report this report, but maybe, you know, evaluations didn't get turned in, you know, names didn't get applied to them, so Gail gets this random evaluation in the mail, I mean, theoretically, you could mail in an evaluation and without the names on it, how do we know it's properly evaluated?
Typically, it's kind of a number of things, so I don't, I'm not worried about the number of this thing coming in, uh, and usually it's done by email, you email, right? You can make the motion that the law doesn't allow. I mean, the board could got that, but you can't force, you're an elected official, and you choose not to submit the evaluation, or you choose not to sign it. It doesn't, the law does not require it.
It doesn't require, but it doesn't limit it, right?
You, like, I typically sign mine, just because I wanna, I forget, but sometimes I wanna make sure they got it. But most, I would say, of the boards I've represented, almost all of them are listening. If you remember how they've done years in the past.
There's gonna be some signs and...
It's just kind of a hit or miss. If you want to sign it, if you don't, some people are more open about signing it. They don't put the name to it. So.
If, so, if we can't require our members to turn in an evaluation with a name on it, I'll just be very clear in the fact that I'm gonna write mine in the big bold letters, because I think you deserves to know what my feedback review is, Director. And I think, most importantly, our constituents deserve to know. You know, if I had Jimmy come to me on Monday and say, "Oh, I can't stand Director Fields," I can say, "Yep, I agree. I can't stand her. She's awful." And then on Tuesday, Suzie comes to me and says, "Oh, I love Director Fields." I say, "Yeah, I love her too." I'm just not gonna do that. So you can count on mine having my name on it. And I hope my fellow board members enjoy it.
Do we need to go to the mail?
Yeah, I think it's easier to do the email, don't you, I mean, it's okay with you.
My mail has a lead to get from one club officer, another one.
We will do the email, and when you get your stuff in, we'll...
Is there a due date for this, to end this performance cycle before we go into the next one?
Like I said, at the, you know, the meeting, it seems like we've always did this in March or April. But when you look, it's supposed to be done later in the year, like November, start this process in November. So maybe this year, we, I don't know how you can get beyond that.
Well, I think the evaluation tool is supposed to be given early on, so I know what my performance expectations are. And then at the end of that year, the evaluation takes place.
We're wondering, y'all did the board retreat in February. The state's dream goal is that everybody fills out the evaluation before the board retreat, and they use that previous years that to go through and look at it. Because she needs to have, to know what your expectations are for her to meet. So usually, you'll do an instrument a year ahead of that, and say, "Okay, this is what you've got to look forward to." And if you turn it in, that board retreat is typically when everybody opens it, discusses it. But it's important that you stay on a one-year schedule, because you can't change course. As I said, you say, you capture a big deal, she's gonna want proud. I'm out of water at that time. So the board retreat time's a great time to have board evaluation directors by R H N done. And that way, you have to get to the year to, you know, make adjustments.
On medical policy, if that's not planned, we want to go forward. If we do want out, she's gonna do that, but she's in...
I think it's early, it's early to...
Yeah, I think a regular schedule would be, would be best, and it would be very fair to her, and it would be better for us.
It's a truer model if you do it that way.
Is Kay, I think, voted on the issue in July or August, before the school year. So she has a plan to go out. So she has a full year to, which I think is very costly, or even July, June, July or August, to vote on the issue that we're using.
After we do this one, in July, we need to convey more.
I know what you're talking about.
Yes. And then you have this year's TCAB that'll be coming in for next year.
For next year.
So we will do that.
Chair, a question. So, so many, so many. But we'll start with this one. When you said, um, you cannot use, was a capital project money if the project has started?
Correct.
What determines if a project has started?
Broken ground, the architect involved something, because they look at that as throwing away money. So like, we've got, we think we're gonna be in a budget cycle. Our athletic director hustle to get some stuff up on that athletic complex. So if you knew we could pull the rug out, that's...
Speaking of, I would like to ask a question. If we have our comp for that, and you said like, aside, is this, is it, is your opinion that that money shouldn't be left there in its allocation?
My school board opinion is a hundred percent, once you've allocated the capital expenditure, you'll never get it back if you use it to move into a budget issue. Because when you budgeted it, you should have budgeted it with the idea that we're gonna see this project to its conclusion. I think it's a very bad policy to start voting a policy, because you all change. You know, the next time, there'll be five less of you potentially. And I think once you vote and fund a capital project, that that money, in my opinion, should stay there to finish the project. Because you think about it, you've blown your argument. You know, you blow everything else, and nothing will ever get built. And then I think you should use your fund reserve to be set aside money for like, capital improvements, because that slips up on you bigger than anything. Roof's go bad, something happened, remember when that occurred? And if you don't let your fund balance fill, that's why you're gonna rob your designated reserve, because then roof comes up where you're gonna get the money to fix something that has to be fixed. Our, it's a danger. So, but I would, I think legally, yes, you could, in theory, do it. But I think it is making a horrifically bad fiscal to stop a funded project that is there.
With that, I mean, safe to face in that, you could take the money allotted, where you can not balance the budget. And these are our two options. Where do you sit there?
You may, that should never, that situation should never arise. Because when you funded that...
What if it's not solely that?
Well, you, you, it's, once you, when you did it, you should have had, let's say, a million dollars. I'm just pulling the number out of my head. And you all felt, we're gonna pay for this over the two-year capital outlay. You should have secured funding at that point. And you're not, it's not like you're getting to save the ten million dollars that's put aside, because you've not put the bull aside there. You put a whole, a part of the money you're borrowing aside. And that's why I think never end the capital project, because people think, "Well, we're paying a million dollars for this deal house." Well, you're not getting the million dollars this year. You're, all you're saving is the percentage of what your note would have been over the long course of the note. Because it's, you know, you're not paying cash as you go. You're, it's like you're buying a cash. You're borrowing against your capital outlay money, and you're paying it out over twenty years, usually. So you don't save as much as you think. And if you've lost a project, it took probably five years to get everybody together to fund.
But so, I, can I, with regard, with this, there was one point seven million dollars set aside, Richard.
Okay.
At TISA, was no borrowing, it was one point seven. We have spent that now to about nine hundred thousand now. We've used money out of it for other stuff. So there's nine hundred thousand of the one point seven million remaining right now to do the intent of the project.
Okay.
So you're gonna have to come up with the other one point two million to get up to two million, and the architect's setting costs to a billion. So the question is, that nine hundred thousand, is it okay to stay there for that? Or can we use the nine hundred thousand dollars to budget?
I don't wish that much, Jeff's supposed to do this, Marlowe, that, maybe. So I've got a, this is a question more for him. I think Mr. Marlowe could tell you that that nine hundred thousand TISA money that was allocated for that capital outlay should probably stay with that capital outlay project. But I respectfully defer to Jeff.
And I'm sure we'll be getting it.
And he will, I would support what he says on that issue, because that's one of his job requirements.
That is something that's gotta be addressed. But also, in your professional, that is legal. Whether we, it's legal, it's unfair, but...
That's, that's your target, because if you have many matching funds that were raised by Mr. Pudd, then what are you gonna do with that? All that money has to be accounted for. How can you refund it back to somebody that's already taken a tax deduction for it? How can you justify to the taxpayer that you're throwing away the architectural plans? You know, in theory, lock in an interest rate to bill the rest of, I mean, there's a lot of legal gray areas. But again, I don't know how you all are planning on funding it. When we did ours, half of it was paid for through donations, half of it was paid for the capital outlay. Now, well, we didn't start until we had the donations in our bank for, you can't turn around and tell the folks, "Hey, thanks for the donation. We're not gonna build this thing. We're gonna, we're gonna do this." And don't look at that. I don't know if y'all took donations. I don't, so...
It's all TISA money.
But was it, was it TISA money that was allocated to capital outlay?
It was a separate account for any, for a future capital project. And we, you know, we've done this way, we've repaired out of it.
But see, that's a capital outlay.
It is. So again, there was a million seven there, and now we've gone to about a million and a half, a hundred thousand million. So it's gonna have to have another million injected to get it toward the architects' asset price. And we're gonna address that in future, this calendar.
That would be a nice time for Jeff on the phone. Because I really know, that is his age. People know the answer to that question.
Of course, we're gonna, we're gonna get there.
That is an account question, it's supposed to be a legal question. Jeff will definitely answer that.
You made a good shot spot there, Dale.
Well, no, it's just that's in his purveyor, not mine. Like I said, don't give this part over there.
My next thing would be, um, if we, here's a copy of your last performance, let's see what the date is on that. Should that be twelve months performance on?
All you require is to do it once a year. I mean, I've...
The last one was April.
About here.
Because I was laid up with an anchor.
Is that it?
Is that it?
Thank you, Chair.
Motion, Chair.